Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Call the meeting to order, and the City Council and the Lincoln County Commissioners on this Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. We'll start with a review of the attendance and state of the quorum as of present. All the Lincoln County Commissioners are here: Commissioner Gibbon, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Aaron's, and Commissioner Poppins, and myself. So a quorum is present.
All right, and I'll ask Clerk to read the role for the city, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson? Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Knightsert?
Here.
Selberg?
All right, City also has a quorum present.
All right, we'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask the Commissioners for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second, Poppins.
Thank you. I have a motion by Schmidt and a second by Poppins. Go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landian?
Yes.
All right, I'd ask for a similar motion from the City Council to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Jensen. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero.
Would the Clerk go ahead and call, read the item into the record for our agenda tonight?
Item four is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 158, 2006 Joint Zoning Regulations, Lincoln County and Sioux Falls, Subchapter C, Commercial District and Definitions. At the August 11th, 2021 Joint Planning Commission meeting, Lincoln County voted three to one for approval. The city voted three to one for approval. Motion passed. Sponsor is the mayor.
Thank you. I'd go ahead and ask the Items Representative to come up and speak on this agenda item.
Good evening. Sam Trebelcock, Senior Planner, City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. Toby Brown was unable to be here. He's planning director with Lincoln County. However, I believe he's on the phone right now, so if there's any questions, we might refer to Toby also.
Let me just confirm that. Toby, you on the line with us right now?
Yes, I am on the line.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Sam.
So I'm going to spend a lot of introductory time on this issue. A lot of you have been familiar with the issue for quite a number of months now. But obviously, what we're looking at doing is, within the joint jurisdictional area, and that's why we're all sitting together tonight, is to adopt new regulations for cannabis, for cannabis establishments. So I'm going to kind of take you through a couple of different things, including to begin with, kind of our, this ordinances timeline and where we've been, some of what we've already heard a little bit about. But on August 11th, there was a joint Lincoln County Planning Commission and Sioux Falls recommendation to approve the ordinance that's in front of you. Lincoln County Planning Commission recommended approval three to one. And the City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission recommend approval at three to one also. So now, August 17th, separately, Lincoln County heard and had the first reading of the ordinance, and then Sioux Falls did the same thing. So now we're to second reading where we sit together. So that's here on August 24th. Now, the process would be, if we can continue this process, is Sioux Falls would publish the ordinance for adoption, if you decide to adopt, on August 28th. Lincoln County has a number of different publications, newspapers, that they need to publish. The last one would be on September 3rd. So the adoption of this ordinance then for Sioux Falls, we have two separate ordinances that you're actually adopting here, but you're sitting together, and they're exactly the same. Sioux Falls' ordinance would be effective on September 17th, and then the Lincoln County ordinance would be adopted, effective on September 23rd. So a lot of this, again, you're updating regulations. Again, there's two separate regulations that you're looking at. And that's what you see in those attachments to the meeting, for this meeting agenda. So, City of Sioux Falls is updating Chapter 158, 156, and 158 dot, dot four, 471 of the Sioux Falls codified ordinances, and that's, that's the joint jurisdictional ordinances that we have. And that's the ordinance that you'll be considering, and you'll be considering and potentially adopting. Lincoln County, you're updating Article 9 and 24 of the Lincoln County Joint Jurisdiction Codified Ordinances. So those are your ordinances. Both ordinances have exactly the same regulations, and I'll take you through those on the next slide here, in summary. So the summary of the ordinance details are number of medical cannabis establishments, all four. So you have the dispensaries, cultivation, testing, and manufacturing. The zoning districts which it's allowed are in the commercial and light industrial district. The types of uses is, it's a permissive use. So in this particular case, if it's approved and it's allowed, it's allowed, but there's no option under this ordinance for a conditional use if it's under, or does not meet the requirements of a permissive use. The types of sensitive uses are single-family dwellings, public or private schools, church, park, and public use facility. So all those sent, the distance that these, any of these medical, or excuse me, yeah, between the medical cannabis establishments and the sensitive uses need to be is 1,000 feet. And then there's also a spacing distance between medical cannabis establishments, which is also 1,000 feet. Within the regulations, it does allow co-location. All other conditions really are within the licensure ordinance or the state permit, so there's not many other standards that you might see in other ordinances. Now, here's two different maps. The top map is kind of the sensitive use buffer map for 1,000 feet within some of the sensitive uses. This map was put together by Lincoln County GIS and does show anything that's kind of in a color, yellow, blue, or kind of that pink color. Those are areas where it's 1,000 feet to these sensitive uses. So there wouldn't be the ability for a medical cannabis establishment to locate in those areas. Now, at the same time, you also have to take in consideration the bottom map, which is the joint jurisdictional zoning map. So this is the area that these regulations would apply to. And anything that's commercial or industrial, it would be allowed. Now, essentially, if you boil all this down, the areas that would be allowed would be the area at the T interchange, the areas that you see the purple and the red. There'll be some areas that would be allowed for medical cannabis establishments along that kind of T interchange area. So those are the areas that, based upon this map, that would be eligible for that. So, other than that, I would take any questions that you have, or Toby would, or anybody else.
Does anyone have any questions for Sam?
Sam, Joel Aaron's, I'm on the Lincoln County Commission. Why 1,000 feet?
So 1,000 feet was, has been the general standard that the, we kind of came out of that, the task force that we looked at. Everybody, Minniac County, Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, seemed to be comfortable with looking at 1,000 feet as a sensitive, from sensitive land uses. So that's kind of where it came from.
Well, I understand where it came from, but what I want to understand is...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
What I want to understand is, why 1,000 feet?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, that's, that's a good policy distinction. I think, you know, when, when you're looking at it, and we start looking at, for instance, in our zoning ordinance, we have adult uses that are 1,000 feet. And I think that was the general look and view, was that it was, in this particular case, similar to that kind of a use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else here have any questions for the speaker? If not, we can go ahead, and if there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up, I'll limit you to five minutes, if you have any questions or comments.
Hello. Ned Horstedt, I'm the Executive Director of the Cannabis Industry Association, representing businesses, entrepreneurs in the state. You probably have all seen me at a meeting like this. I attended all the IM-26 Task Force meetings, and most of the Lincoln County meetings, and most of the Sioux Falls meetings. Just a couple of things that I would like to point out in public comment here. Very interesting how we've come to this, two very different governing bodies, right? And even, I think, how they've responded to their citizens has been quite a bit different here. Lincoln County, one of the first to pass their ordinance in the state. They invited stakeholder and public input. You can go on their website, you can pick up the phone, talk to these people directly. Last week, in the course of probably less than four hours, I had talked to everyone in Lincoln County. So the access that you have to the public and the responsiveness that you have, I just want to point out, we really appreciate. When you look at Sioux Falls and Lincoln County, one thing that we do have in common is about three in four voters supported IM-26. I think that's important to remember as we're putting together this particular ordinance. In Sioux Falls, you know, I've reached out to each of you through your city emails. I've called the number on the website. I don't know if it rings to a phone in the basement. I heard back from about half of you. I just want to reiterate what I said last week, which is, the door is open. I'd be happy to meet with all of you and stakeholder input. But what we have here is two governing bodies with a very, very different approach to how to handle the cannabis, or the implementation of IM-26. Lincoln County, through stakeholder input and the wisdom, I think, of the county commissioners, listened to their voters, listened to the stakeholders, and we ended up with the, arguably, the most free-market ordinance that we've seen in the entire state. Very business-friendly, pro-business, good for patients. We're not banning businesses. We're letting people grow in agricultural areas in an agricultural state. I think all of that is excellent. No real large setback requirements. I think the Lincoln County ordinance on its own is excellent. In Sioux Falls, you have one of the most restrictive, anti-business ordinances that we have seen in the entire state. And I'm working with cities and counties throughout the state. I think many of them are looking at Sioux Falls and what to do. So what we have tonight is really an interesting thing, and I'll be, be really interested to see if you can come together, because I know from the get-go, the idea was, maybe we can have something that Minniaha and Sioux Falls and Lincoln County could accept. And here now, we're down to the most restrictive and the most free-market and pro-business ordinances. So, relative to this specific ordinance, the main change, talked about just a little bit a moment ago, is the 1,000 feet. That is more restrictive than Sioux Falls' highly restrictive ordinance, the way that it is. I mean, they're at least allowing conditional use within 500 feet. I don't think that necessarily makes sense in the joint zoning area. I think that the, that should probably be allowed use at 500 feet. I would argue maybe even 300 feet, which is what we're seeing in communities like Brookings and several others that are going through the same exercise that we are here tonight. The other piece that I'll point out specifically on Point One, and it may be elsewhere in here, is the delineation between property line and exterior walls of the building. Probably doesn't make a lot of sense in a joint zoning jurisdiction where you have a lot of rural residential, you know, acreages, maybe there are farmers that would like to get into this business. If you've got 1,000 feet from a single-family dwelling, based on the exterior walls of the building, and to the property line of the single-family dwelling, guess what? Anyone that wants to be involved in the business, that may have farm ground out there, yes, some people may not want this in their backyard. This, this line here would exclude anyone that would want to get into the business from doing it on their own property. So that's the, the main change that I would recommend here. Thank you for your time, and again, I'll reiterate what I've been saying since we started having these meetings months ago, which is, the door is open. Happy to communicate with any of you. And we can talk business. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd wish to speak on the item? Come on, we just state your name and address, please?
Jason Karimi, 415 North Duluth Avenue, Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. I'll be brief. I wanted to respond to a point that came up last week. I also wanted to reiterate some concerns about federal law. If we're going to start businesses that are violating federal law, turning our neighbors into federal criminals, there are solutions. One of the solutions we've worked on out of Iowa, we've sent, we had Sarah Rizeter, she's the Deputy Director of the Iowa Department of Public Health. She had, on our behalf, she sent four letters to the FDA, the DEA, and two other federal agencies requesting guarantees that our businesses in Iowa for medical cannabis would not result in loss of federal funding. For example, the universities and the colleges. If you allow patients to have a federal Schedule I substance on our universities, are we going to lose funding at those universities? The FDA, in June, we just found this out last week, the FDA sent a letter back to us in Iowa, saying that they guarantee that, under our law in Iowa, which is much more restrictive than Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls, some advocates have claimed our medical program is just like a recreational program, which opens up the opportunity to have diversion. That's a real concern. In Iowa, we don't...
Is this related to the zoning ordinance? That's what we're considering, is the zoning tonight?
I apologize. Let me, let me just back off on that. I'll just go sit down. I'm sorry, guys.
You can. If it's related to the zoning, that's the item we're considering here tonight.
Well, that's, since we're talking about the cannabis businesses, I just think the federal issue is a problem. The other thing was, that I was going to bring up, besides the federal criminality issue, which is important, was the concern that business industry leaders have said that this is just a way to make money. And while that might be true, remember that the patients are not businessmen, and the patients just want relief. That was, I'm sure you're smart enough to have thought of that already. But one of the councilmembers last week kindly brought that issue up, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak on the zoning regulation? If not, any discussion amongst members? If not, I'd consider a motion to...
Madam Chair, I've got some questions for staff.
Okay. Yep, yep. Who do you want, who do you want to come up?
Okay. Yeah, Sam, or Bill Golden, or whoever wants to take this. I want to try to get an understanding of the development of 1,000 feet, okay? I want to really drill down into this. I want to try to understand this. So I'm looking at our joint jurisdiction ordinance, and I think that's codified at Section 158.271. Adult uses, correct? Okay. So, the adult uses that we currently have in Lincoln County, there's a number of things related to, you know, adult theater, adult videos, things like that. But what I want to drill down on is bars and liquor stores. So, the setback for a bar and liquor store, if I understand correctly, is 1,000 feet, correct?
No, not bars and liquor stores, no.
Okay. What is the setback for a bar and liquor store in the joint jurisdictional area?
Depending on the type, whether it's on sale or off sale, there's 500 or 200, 500 feet or 250 feet, depending on what type of you're looking at.
Is that in the city, or is that in the joint jurisdictional area?
That's city, oh, yeah. And I don't know the joint jurisdictional. And Toby would know that right offhand.
Because I think Section 158...
There is no setback, there's no setback in the joint jurisdictional area.
Thank you, Toby.
Okay. Because I'm looking at 158.271, and it's talking about 1,000-foot setbacks, Toby. It says, "None of the following permitted uses may be established, operated, or maintained within 1,000 feet of a residential district, a church, or a school, meeting all the requirements of compulsory education laws." And then it lists a number of them. And then there's Sub C, and I think in Sub C, Section 6 and 7, it states a bar and liquor store. And I just want some help understanding this, because what I'm hearing from Toby is not squaring with what I'm reading. And if I'm reading in the wrong place, please tell me. But I thought that this was the joint jurisdictional reg, right?
Yeah, you're, you're sure that's not 157 that you're reading it from?
This is 158.271, adult uses. Am I in the wrong place?
The adult uses, there may be 1,000 feet, but one of the other things I'll mention, and was pointed out to me after, you know, the reason for the 1,000 feet is, it goes beyond just adult uses. Also remember, 1,000 feet is right within IM-26 for schools. So that was another place that the 1,000 feet came from. And irregardless of what we do tonight, 1,000 feet from schools will, will still be the...
Absolutely. That's state law. They've occupied the field. We can't move there. What I'm trying to figure out, though, is in the development of the 1,000-feet restriction is, the way I read this, under the joint jurisdictional regulation, there is a carve-out for bar and liquor stores to have a conditional use permit. It says, "The 1,000-foot restriction provided for in Division C may be waived in a conditional use permit issued upon proper application." Was that considered, was the applicability of a conditional use permit considered in the ordinance that we're talking about tonight?
While the task force was meaning there was consideration of all those types of things, including conditional uses, yes.
And they, they nixed that.
Well, there was a lot of discussion, and, and obviously, you, you see different regulations coming out in all the different bodies. In the case of this one, this one had a permissive use. The City of Sioux Falls came in with one that had a conditional use option, but only allowing it to go down to 500 feet. Minniac County, now, remember, Minniac County's joint ordinance that they're coming forward with only has one medical establishment, and that's the dispensary. And the same with City of Sioux Falls. They also have a conditional use option that's coming, but only for one, and that's for the dispensary.
Okay. And then also, there's, there's another hitch to this section as well. It states that not more than two of the following permitted uses may be established within 1,000 feet of each other. And a bar and a liquor store are permitted uses that could be within 1,000 feet of each other. Was that, was that similarly considered as well, but then ruled out for the use of medical cannabis?
You're talking about for, for alcohol? There was no consideration and discussion about alcohol during this?
No. I, I mean, was the possibility of having two medical cannabis license uses considered within, you know, 1,000 feet of each other? Because I think the current ordinance, if I'm reading it correctly, says it's got to be 1,000 feet or more apart. But the current joint jurisdictional regulation says that a bar and a liquor store, there's, there's a carve-out. It says you can actually have two within 1,000 feet of each other. And I'm just wondering if that was considered as well?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
Sam, could you enlighten me a little bit of the reason to be permissive versus a conditional use permit under the type? Typically, we would have a CUP for something similar to this. Could you help explain that, please? Thank you.
So, the reasoning that it was looked at as a permissive use, it really does, you know what the rules and regulations are going in, and a lot of times with a conditional use, you know, the standards that you have to set for that make it kind of difficult sometimes for people to understand that. So that was kind of the reasoning and discussion behind it, was, again, to set a standard that everybody knew what it was, and knew the rules of the, of the ballgame right up front.
Go ahead.
Okay. As somebody who sat on the task force, I'm going to, to the extent that I can as one person, I'll try to answer a few questions, kind of what the thought process was. And I've said this to, to our body as well. In general, I think we all kind of agreed to be, there's a lot of unknowns, and to be cautious, if anything, to start. As far as the, and I should, I should caution that we didn't sit down and write every single ordinance. However, we gave staff direction, and they came up with ordinances that started pretty similar. Now, of course, they're all moving a little bit, depending, as we move through these processes. But as far as, I, I think the thing with the, in general, with not doing conditional uses to start, is, the issue is, is with a conditional use, if you set a standard, like, for example, 1,000 feet, if they want to do anything less than that, including a foot away from another sensitive use, they can get a conditional use permit. And we were trying to create some number that we would know it's going to be a hard limit, and by doing a permitted use, then it has to be X feet away, period, end of story. And then you don't have the risk of it being right next to, at, at least to start. And then as far as between each other, that really comes down to kind of the, we don't want one on every corner sort of thing, the same thing you hear about video lottery and liquor. And it also creates a natural, limited number to start, because you can't have pockets of, of a lot of them. So it kind of creates a, a limited number to, to get things started. Is it the perfect number? I don't know. And, and the other thing we did struggle with, and kind of to your point, is what do you equate it to? You know, I mean, some people would claim it, it's a pharmacy. Some people would claim it's more like adult use. Some would say it's kind of like a bar. There may not be a perfect analogy, but that's generally where we were coming from. And we had 1,000 feet to start with no conditional use for the Sioux Falls City ordinance. And shortly before we brought it forward, there's some discussion and some, some who had some discomfort with that, so it was made to be, it could be as little as 500 with a conditional use permit, or 1,000 feet with, you just, you don't have to go get a conditional use permit. So it's been a little bit of a moving target, but that's really what we were coming, coming from on those.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? This, sir, we're done with the public comment? That's for, that's just for us? Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. If not, I'd ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion. And I'm going to, and if you think it's out of order, I can wait, but I'm going to make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance. So if you want to wait for somebody to offer it, and then I'll make a privileged motion to amend. We can do that, if you prefer that, for the sake of clarity.
Madam Chair, I think we would actually need a motion on the floor before we could amend it, so...
Well...
Two, with that, I will offer a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second for discussion.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to amend. And here would be my amendment. I want to amend Section 1 down to 500 feet. I want to amend Section 3 to 500 feet. I want to amend Section 4 to 500 feet. I want to amend Section 5 to 500 feet. And I want to amend Section 6 down to 500 feet. So basically, move them all down to 500, with the exception of the state-mandated 1,000 feet from a public or private school. That's the First Amendment. That's the First Amendment. The Second Amendment I want to make to it, or as part of a holistic amendment, I should say, let me offer an omnibus amendment here.
Well, I, let me just, what I'd like to do is proceed on the first motion. We can have these discussions, and I'm open to having those discussions, because, I mean, I can tell you that maybe people can get on board with these amendments, but I'm also looking at our timeline for getting something in place, in the timeframe that we need to get it in place. So is there somebody that can answer those questions?
Well, Madam Chair, I'll offer a second to the motion to amend, just for discussion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, a lot of the things that you're looking at changing, I could support in time. I think due to the pressure that we have to get something in place is crucial. One of the things that I would also look, if we did move these to a lesser distance, I would look at getting away from a point of permissive use to a conditional use permit, because we're allowing manufacturing as well as distribution, and there's a lot of facets to that. So if we're looking at making it more accessible because of distance, I would like us to have the ability to scrutinize the types of facilities a little more through the process of a conditional use permit. It's not clear as one would think if you're just distributing it. There's a lot more to it to that, but I yield the floor.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Golden or Mr. Bankford, do you want to, is there some guidance you can give us if we make these kinds of amendments right now?
Paul Bankford from the city attorney's office. Obviously, our office has no input from a policy standpoint. That's up to this body. But some things we want to make you aware of from a legal standpoint is that the, South Dakota is supposed to have their rules and regulations in place by October 29th. There has certainly been discussions from the state that they expect they may be able to get their rules and regulations in place by October 4th. And we'll see how that works out, but I just wanted you to be aware of those timeframes in terms of the discussions that have been happening. The issue on the amendments really comes down to a state statute that was enacted in 2016. SDCL 9-19-7.1 says that if any amendment presented and approved by the governing body at the second reading of an ordinance substantially alters the substance of the ordinance from the first reading, the proposed ordinance as amended may not be considered for final adoption until at least five days after a duly noticed public meeting of the governing body pursuant to Chapter 125. And where that has an effect on your discussions today is the issue of whether or not you want a joint jurisdictional ordinance in effect by October 4th, the date that the state has indicated, that they may have their final rules promulgated. Because if there are any amendments, that will put this beyond October 4th. And by that, we know, we spoke to Mr. Brown, or at least Mr. Brown let us know that, from at least the Lincoln County's perspective, there are five legal newspapers that publish at various times. And so even if this passes as is today, the final publication on those papers wouldn't be until September 3rd. It would be impossible to give adequate notice to people to come to a second reading for a substantial alteration in sufficient time, and then allowing publication for it to go into effect on October 4th, which would mean there would be no rules in effect on October 4th. And I'd like to go back to that statute that I cited, because the issue is, what substantially alters? That statute has been in effect since 2016, as I previously stated. There is no law in South Dakota on that. There's been no interpretation. There is belief by some that that means that clerical errors can be corrected without moving it to another reading. There are, there is also a potential interpretation that, look, you were talking about 1,000 feet. So if you modify it to 500 feet, is that a substantial alteration? Because the public knew that a distance was being discussed, and so if that distance changes, is that adequate notice to the public? There are arguments on both sides. The problem is, we don't know how the South Dakota Supreme Court will come down on it, and it puts it at risk if you do not pass it as is tonight, puts risk that there would be nothing in effect by October 4th. So from that standpoint, I wanted you to at least be aware of that legal issue, to be aware of the concern. You know, Mr. Golden and I talked earlier. In a perfect world, if there were amendments that were being proposed, we would ask that, or we would recommend that this be moved to a different second reading date, so that those amendments could be adequately considered, and there wouldn't be the issue about whether the ordinance was substantially altered. That's what would happen in a perfect world. There's not time to do that. If you want something in effect on October 4th, the safest approach, from a legal perspective, would be to pass what's in front of you, and then make whatever modifications that you felt were appropriate as a body after that. The risk of not doing that is that you don't have a joint jurisdictional ordinance in effect on October 4th. That's a risk that we wanted to make you aware of as you're deliberating and making decisions.
Thank you. With that, I guess I'm going to ask that that motion to amend be rescinded, and that we move forward with a motion to approve the agenda item as written.
Well, I'm not going to rescind the motion, Madam Chair. It's been seconded, and I'm going to take an opportunity to have discussion on it. But before I do that, I've got a question for legal counsel, from Mr. Bankford. You brought up the issue of this Mr. Brown from, where is he from?
I was talking about Toby Brown.
Oh.
Toby Brown, because we were discussing whether it could really be accomplished by October 4th. You know, in Sioux Falls, we deal with one paper, the Argus Leader, for our legal publication. So we could have a second reading on like September 8th and get that accomplished. The problem is, Lincoln County has five newspapers with different publication dates, and so it's not feasible to do that from Lincoln County's standpoint.
And so, the October 4th date that you mentioned, is that written into statute anywhere?
No. What the statute says is that they have to come up with something by October 29th.
Okay.
There have been lots of public comments by the State Department of Health that October 4th is the date that they are shooting for. And so that is why that's the date that we mentioned, because that's the date that the state has discussed on numerous occasions. But you're right, what's in statute is that they have to have it done by October 29th.
Right. So, lots of hearsay, lots of talk, lots of people saying things, but there's no concrete requirement that we have to have a, our ordinance in place by October 4th?
No. That, we're just relying on what the state has said and assuming that what they've said is what they mean to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to speak to my amendments. First of all, I want to thank the drafters of the ordinance. A lot of hard work was put into this, regardless of whether you support it or not. I appreciate everybody's thoughts and everybody's efforts. Let me cut to the quick, though. Why 500 feet instead of 1,000? I've heard no compelling evidence articulated to suggest that 1,000 feet is the proper setback. Now, why do we do setbacks? Well, it's to be able to prevent a specific use from being too close to a certain sensitive use, or a certain type of other zoning, that we feel may be incurred upon by that use. So, for example, we don't want a medical cannabis dispensary to be within 1,000 feet of a bus stop under this ordinance. Now, I'm looking at 1,000 feet, and I'm comparing that to the other setbacks that we have codified in law. The current setback that we have in joint jurisdiction, the joint jurisdictional area is 1,000 feet for bars and liquor stores, but you can get a conditional use permit to allow you to go closer. But you can't get a conditional use permit under this ordinance to bring a medical cannabis use closer to one of the protected uses. So what I'm trying to figure out here is, why are we governing medical cannabis more restrictively than what we are bars and liquor stores? Well, I'm taking a look at medical cannabis. I'm taking a step back, and I'm saying to myself, okay, is it medical cannabis medicine? Is it an intoxicating substance? Is it something that people are just going to run to their doctor and go get a medical card for so that they can use medical, or they can use cannabis? I don't know. But the drafters of the ordinance and the voters passed with overwhelming support the fact that people could use medical cannabis. Now, is medical cannabis medicine? I believe it is. I've met with those families of end-of-life care patients. They think it's medicine. Children who suffer from epilepsy, I've met with their parents, they think it's medicine. Soldiers, members of our military with severe PTSD, they think it's medicine. Just as a side note, the VA is actually experimenting with LSD to give to people, give to members of the military with severe PTSD. That's not medicine, but they're experimenting with it, and they think it'll work. At one time, even acupuncture wasn't medicine, but now the VA actually authorizes the use of acupuncture. So I'm saying to myself, there's quite a few people out there who view medical cannabis as medicine. I mean, granted, the FDA has not technically approved it, but the drafters of this ordinance and the voters said, we want people that have these certain debilitating disease complexes, processes, to have an opportunity to go to their doctor and get cleared to use it. Don't get an actual prescription, but you do get the ability. You get cleared to use it by a trained licensed provider. And the trained licensed provider can't just give it out to whoever he wants, he or she wants to give it out to. The individual has to be suffering from a certain number of debilitating disease processes.
Commissioner, I don't want to interrupt you necessarily. Can we stay on task with the setback conversation that we're talking about right now?
Well, thank you. And I think it's very important for people to understand the difference between alcohol setbacks and medical cannabis setbacks. And with medical cannabis, you have to go through a more rigorous process to use it. In fact, according to state law, you cannot consume it at the location where you purchase it, and you cannot consume it in public. Now, with bars and liquor stores, in a liquor store, you can't consume alcohol. In a bar, you can. It can be, alcohol can be used on-site and in public. And that's a critical distinction here under state law that I want to make as a part of my advocacy push for my amendment here, is that medical cannabis is already, under state law, restricted to where it can be used. It can't be used on-site, can't be used in public. Liquor, on the other hand, can be. You can drink it right there on-site with your friends and in public. So there's a difference right there. I tend to, and there's no setback on pharmacies in our joint jurisdictional area. Well, I tend to view medical cannabis as being more in line with a pharmacy, not exactly. But I tend to be, tend to view it as more in line with a pharmacy than what I do with a bar or a liquor store.
All right. Thank you for that. I think everyone here understands your position.
So what I'd like to do, because what I'd like to do is propose to people that we adopt a 500-foot setback, because we regulate bars and liquor stores at 1,000 feet. And I don't think that a medical dispensary is in line, the general, you know, critical mass of a medical dispensary is not really in line with a bar or liquor store. It's more in line, not completely, with a pharmacy. And so that's why I'm making my push for a 500-foot setback. And so I would ask for my fellow commissioners' support for a 500-foot setback instead of a 1,000-foot setback.
With all due respect, I could maybe get on board with the 500, and I understand your position, but tonight, I'm not going to be on board with it because of the reasons brought up by legal counsel. I think cutting the setback that we've published by half could be looked at as a substantial change, so I'd be voting no. I'm going to be voting no on this motion. So I'm just going to ask, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask Sean to call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Madam Chair?
Motion fails.
Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate, my vote on no, Commissioner Ehrens, does not mean that I'm not in favor of what you just talked about. I think you made very good sense. And I think that, from what I'm looking at, I agree with our chair in that we're looking at a timeline here in a fashion of trying to get this thing in place. It's not etched in stone. We can make these accommodations, but for our purpose here tonight is to get this thing passed on the record, and then we look back and see whether, because I think there's going to be a lot of changes, because the gorilla in the room, we still don't know what the Supreme Court is going to do with recreational. And that may change this whole ordinance process. So I think for purposes to have a timeline to get this done and accommodate what legal counsel had said, that's why my vote was a negative on your things. But I'm not opposed to any of the things that you said. It was a timing thing for me.
Thank you. Is there an alternative motion?
I have a Second Amendment to make, Madam Chair. And the Second Amendment that I would like to make is that we change the way in which we measure the distance, and this will apply to all paragraphs with the exception of Paragraph 2. And the way in which I think we ought to measure the setbacks is from building to building. And so my amendment would be that the, if we want to use the formal language, the distance shall be measured in a straight line from the exterior walls of the building, and then I'll include everything in the parentheses there, to the exterior walls of the, and then just insert what the specific protected use is in that. So in Section 1, it would be the exterior wall of a single-family dwelling. Section 3 would be the exterior wall of the church. Section 4 would be the exterior wall of the public service facility. Section 5 would be exterior, or exterior wall of the park, if there is one. And then in Section 6, it'd be the exterior wall of the medical cannabis establishment. So that would be my amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the reason for my amendment is, I believe out in the joint jurisdictional area, what I'm concerned about is you may have properties, for example, where an individual has 30, 40 acres or something like that, and they might, may want to put a medical cannabis establishment on that property. Well, there's already a natural setback if you're on 30 acres. I don't want those people to have to be encumbered with having to go through expensive replating fees and going through that process. And I think it makes it more consistent with some of our other zoning decisions. In Lincoln County, we've dealt with, we've dealt with odor and nuisance issues a lot. We've dealt with, we deal with concentrated animal feeding operations on a pretty regular basis in Lincoln County. And I like to think that we've adopted some pretty common sense, sensical zoning ordinances down there. And we're pretty familiar with this as well. And we're pretty familiar with this as well. And in that instance, I believe that on the CAFOs, we had a previous discussion about going property line to property line and the commission decided not to go that route. So, I believe that we still use the building to building, if you want to call it that, measurement process.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let me call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Motion fails. I'd consider a motion to approve the ordinance as written.
We have a motion by Poppins and a second by Schmidt.
Let's call the roll on it then.
Commissioner Ehrens?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right, I'd ask for a motion from the city council.
Move to approve item number four.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Kylie and seconded by Knightzert. Is there discussion amongst the council on this one? All right, Councilor Knightzert, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, I think there is some merit to discussion of something along the lines of what Commissioner Ehrens talks about, the only cautions. And I think Commissioner Poppins made reference to it. There was focus on dispensaries and we can argue about how close they are to whatever. We won't need to get into that. But it's important to note that the Lincoln County licensing applies, which means all four uses are in play. So, it's not just dispensaries. That would be 500 feet from other things. So, I think that's something that needs to be addressed and I think there could be wisdom to potentially, if you come back and amend this later, to have a conditional use permit potentially rather than just 500 feet away and no hearing, then at least you can have those discussions if there's anything that needs to be talked about. The measuring could be potentially, could make some sense because a county is very different than a, than a city. I do also want to, just mentioning a few other things, I guess with respect, I'm not, I don't think necessarily FDA approval, I would, or the lack of testing and of the risks and the benefits, I would call that a technicality. I mean, I think that's pretty a big deal and it still is a legal by federal law. I mean, there's, we are essentially doing drug approval by popular vote, which there's some level of absurdity to it, but I digress. But I think, again, we have to be cognizant of that. The other thing I want to make note that I think councilors should be aware of is the Lincoln County License Ordinance, which states, there's a very important clause that says, "A medical cannabis establishment licensed under this ordinance may sell cannabis for adult use so long as they comply with the provisions of Department of Revenue Amendment A. In the event that Amendment A was found to be constitutional, somebody could automatically, as long as they follow the state rules, sell or produce recreational at that location." So, this isn't just about medical, at least in Lincoln County. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Discussion on the council on that one? Councilor Starr?
Thank you. I would like to mirror Commissioner Ehrens' amendment and I would move to amend in section one to change it to 500 feet, section three to 500 feet, section four, 500 feet, section five and six to 500 feet.
All right, there's no second on that?
I'll second.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, there's a second. You want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, both bodies need to have this discussion. I think it's important enough. I take Mr. Binford's, second half of his argument that this isn't a substantial change and isn't under the guidelines, that I think that we have properly noticed this. I don't think anyone in the community is surprised whether we would have a discussion tonight about changing the distance. I think this has been very widely debated. The other is, is that arguing for an amendment or being able to amendment, I find it highly objectionable to be painted into a corner and said that I can't make an amendment or I can't offer an amendment because it's going to be a substantial change. We voted on this over nine months ago. And so, we decided to be here tonight at the deadline to have something in place. And I do find that highly objectionable that, that we're painted into a corner and that we may look at something in the future. I think there's a lot of big dollar decisions that are being made by business owners and to tell them that we may change this. I mean, it's not any different, I guess, than video lottery when we change the amount. So, again, whether I'm getting into this business at 500 feet or getting into the business at 1,000 feet is a huge difference. And I think you've given those first people in a huge advantage. If we change it later to 500 feet, now they're going to have an additional competition, the ability to negotiate for property. I think there's a huge financial, we're giving an artificial value to a small number of licenses and people who take that risk. And I guess that is capitalism at some point, but you know, that's been our concern through this whole thing is that we don't want someone to get rich. We want it to be off into the hinterlands where it's not seen and not visible. But I just, I don't think there are enough locations available in the joint jurisdiction area that 1,000 feet is the right number. Thank you.
All right, we'll take a vote then on that motion to amend.
Further discussion, please?
Go ahead.
I can be brief. I did want to explain my second. I do think it's important that, that as long as we're all here together, which is an accomplishment in and of itself to get us all together, that it's important that the city have the discussion too. I thought there was a lot of merit and a lot of thought in your presentation and I appreciated it. I don't know if I'm going to vote for it or not, quite frankly, but I do think it's important that we kind of have the discussion. And I, if I don't vote for it, I am, I am definitely interested in having that discussion at some point, whether it be now or down the road. And again, the county had an opportunity to discuss it, felt like the city should discuss it too, just to let our fellow commissioners kind of know where we're weighing in now versus where we may be weighing in for the future. So, thank you. I thought both amendments were, were very worthy of discussion.
All right, thank you. Councilor Kylie?
I think one of the key things here is, I mean, it's up to this body to determine whether assumption, something is substantially altered or not. But I think another key part of what Assistant City Attorney Binford brought forward was adequate notice to the public. I mean, I have made it very clear that I'll be bringing amendments forward to our ordinance the first Tuesday of September. But I've also made it very clear that it's my intention to have that posted along with the agenda when it's released the Friday before the meeting, giving the public adequate time to see exactly what the amendment is. So, I don't believe the amendment was made this evening gave adequate notice to the public. I think that's a key difference here. So, I look forward to the vote.
All right, thank you. All right, let's take a vote on this amendment, please.
Councilmember Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightzert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
All right, that amendment fails six to one. We're back to the main motion to approve this item and other discussion here. All right, seeing none, let's take a vote on the motion to approve it then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That one passes six to one.
So, the item passed. We'll have our period of public input now. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and speak to items not on the agenda. I'll limit your comments to five minutes. If you just state your name and address, please.
May I put this here?
Sure. Might want to turn it.
You only need to see IDQ.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. On this topic, I claim no credentials or special training. I reserve the right to be wrong because I often am. In an Argus Leader story published July 28th of this year, the city public health director, Dr. Chima, please forgive any mispronunciation, it's unintentional, stated that his vaccination target for the city was 80%. My questions will center around whether this plan includes antibody surveillance to identify those who are in the category of COVID-19 recovered. A New York Times article updated April 2nd of this year titled, "How Much Hurt Immunity Is Enough," quotes Dr. Fauci speaking about herd immunity. "We really don't know how, what the real number is. I think the real range is somewhere between 70 to 90%, but I'm not going to say 90%. In the same article, they still define herd immunity as through infection or vaccination, as does the CDC. However, in our Sioux Falls policies, I only hear of vaccination targets. I haven't read about antibody surveillance here. I haven't read about adaptive T-cell response assays. I don't see estimates of community or herd immunity on our state dashboards, only vaccination numbers. Why is this? Why isn't serology, what I understand to be a key tool in epidemiology, being used to help determine the number of COVID-19 recovered so policymakers such as yourselves, business owners, and regular citizens can better calibrate both personal and collective risk? It seems like a lot of decisions are having to be made without this vital information. Around the time Sanford Health announced their Survive antibody surveillance study last year, they disclosed in July that they had already measured 6.8% antibody positive in the roughly 6,000 antibody tests they had administered thus far. I, for one, am eager to see the results of the Survive study, which purports to survey an initial 3,000 Sanford Health employees seven times over the last year. But why, but why is no one doing, sorry, I get nervous, but why is no one doing this in the public sector in South Dakota? Why is there no antibody survey data on the state dashboard or the city website? Why is there no estimate of community immunity beyond that of the vaccination campaign targets? As mentioned previously, the 6.8% number was from July, long before we turned the curve in November. That large hump in November, as tragic as the suffering it represents is, it represents a significant number of folks who had to contract COVID-19 and then recover in order to curve, for that curve to turn, a full month before the first voluntary vaccine was administered in South Dakota. Up until last August, our neighbors in Minnesota were submitting their own commercial laboratory data to the CDC. According to this CDC resource, they were reporting 8.8% serop positivity in and around Minneapolis. This is when they had reported 46,045 cases. From this, they had estimated infections to be around 339,000. This is a seven-times multiplier. Today, the South Dakota state dashboard reports 124,240 recovered cases tracked. If our multiplier is anywhere near to that of our neighbors in Minnesota, it approaches the population of the state. Now, obviously, I'm not claiming that, but what I am asking is what is our number? How many are COVID-19 recovered? If we add the COVID-19 recovered and to the voluntarily vaccinated, what is our estimate for herd immunity? Why isn't that publicly made available to the, to the citizens? If we knew that, could it possibly diffuse much of the tension we are seeing around this subject? Those who are truly concerned when they look at just the vaccination rate can take heart. If we offered reimbursement for the $50 antibody test of era offers, maybe someone who is vaccine hesitant but antibody negative will recalibrate their thinking. There is $106 million sitting in the treasury at the state for COVID-19 relief. This would be a perfect claim on those funds. The rebuttal to this point is often that we don't know how long immunity lasts. My counter would be to offer the article published July 14th of this year from the Journal Cell. The article highlights states, "Most recovered COVID-19 patients mount broad durable immunity after infection. Neutralizing antibodies show biphasic decay with half-lives over 200 days," because that was the length of the study, they will be longer. "Spike IgG memory B cells increase and persist post-infection. Those will create antibodies when you need them in the future upon a secondary infection. And durable poly-functional CD4 and CD8 T cells recognize distinct viral epitope regions." In addition to these conclusions, please consider that those of us who have recovered from COVID-19 likely have an often omitted immunological advantage. This would be the presence of IgA antibodies in the mucosal layer of our lungs and respiratory system. The referenced NIH and frontiers in immunology, yeah, sorry, clock, effectively describe why this layer of immunity is not conferred upon those who receive the intramuscular injection of the current vaccines on offer here in the U.S. Acknowledging this, I would respectfully ask that you add the additional category of COVID-19 recovered to your strategy for community immunity and bring unity and abandon this divisive vaccine-only policy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
Hi, Ned Horstet again with the Cannabis Industry Association. Appreciate the discussion today. Thank you all for the work that you put in this over the last few months. It appears that most of you agree that there is merit to the amendments brought by Commissioner Ehrens and Councilor Starr. Before we adjourn, I would ask for the sake of the business community in the Sioux Falls area, if you're genuine in these comments, I ask to you, the officials who were elected by the same people who voted overwhelmingly for IM26, to put your money where your mouth is and schedule a first reading of a new replacement ordinance with the amendments included. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to come up?
Jason Creamy again, 405 North Duluth Avenue, Sioux Falls. I just wanted to say thank you guys for voting for IM26 and sharing that with us. You didn't have to share your vote. I was grateful for that. I'd also like to, for your consideration and for advance notice, consider marijuana churches. I'm a Rastafarian minister there. I helped start a church in Madison, Wisconsin. We had 20,000 members and I think under the Constitution, the First Amendment to the Freedom of Religion would make all of this work we're doing on zoning and distances moot. So, when a marijuana church is formed here in Sioux Falls, I look forward to working with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. And call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I'd ask for a motion on the council to adjourn.
So moved, Jensen.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Can I hit the gavel?
Yes, please.
Yeah, there's a reset, go right back to our loss.